Call to order, the January 22 regular business meeting of Waynesboro City Council. I'd like to welcome everyone this evening. If you wish to speak during the citizen comment period, please sign up on the sheet in the back of chambers. Mr. Allen, would you lead us in the pledge?
Of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Allen. Item two is the adoption of the meeting agenda. Is there a motion to adopt the agenda?
So move.
Thank you, Mr. Short. Is there a second?
I'll say.
Thank you, Mr. Allen. Any discussion? All in favor of approving the agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the agenda passes five to zero. Item three is matters from mayor. I just would like to take a moment to acknowledge the recent storm preparation and snow removal efforts by the entire public works operations. Waynesboro is blessed to have such an exceptional group who not only prepared prior to our recent snow events, but cleared the streets in such an efficient manner. I had several calls from citizens expressing their appreciation, and I would like to thank them all for their hard work and dedication. Item four is matters from council members.
Yes, I have. Earlier this week, I had the pleasure of presenting a Waynesboro citizen with a proclamation from the council and the city for her 60-plus years of volunteering with the Waynesboro Life Saving Squad Women's Auxiliary. Ms. Carolyn Beard started in, I think it said 1964, when she first started volunteering. And let me tell you, she is probably just as spry and happy with life as she was in 64, such a nice lady, nice family. Matter of fact, we did it at her home, and everybody present was either current or former volunteer or rescue or fire worker here in Waynesboro. So it is a group and a family of community servants. But as far as Ms. Beard, she was great, and I think, you know, a proclamation was the least we could do for 60-plus years of volunteering. She was awesome.
Thank you so much for taking the time to present that to her. Anybody else? No? No? Okay, so item five is to consider the consideration of the consent agenda. Mr. Short, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Yeah, I just have a point of order from Ms. Michelson. In our consent agenda is considering the adopting of minutes for a December 21 closed meeting. We don't take minutes for a closed meeting.
No.
So I was suggesting to the mayor that perhaps we strike that provision or just remove 5A entirely and vote on that separately.
Yeah, we need a motion to remove that from the agenda and then second and a vote, and then proceed with the regular consent agenda.
Okay, I'll make that motion.
Okay, and do I have a second to remove item?
I'll say.
All right. And so that item A is removed.
Well.
Oh, all in favor, say aye. Do we have?
I'm sorry, Madam Mayor.
Yes.
A portion of item A.
I was going to remove entirely.
Oh, okay, you're going to remove it and then do a new motion?
And then I'll introduce it without.
Okay, gotcha. Thank you.
Okay, so we've received our motion, and second, all in favor, say aye of removing item A.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, any opposed? Okay, that item has been removed. So next, we will go to consider the remainder of the consent agenda.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to move for approval of the January 8, 2024 organizational and regular business meetings and the January 11, 2024 work session.
Okay, and I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, I have a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that part of the consent agenda passes. Five to zero. Item six is to consider presenting a proclamation naming.
Point of order, Mayor.
Oh.
Did I beat you to it?
You sure do. Okay. Then item five is to consider the consent agenda, items B and C. Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Wood. And do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Lee. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The consent agenda, remainder of the consent agenda does pass. Okay, item six is to consider presenting a proclamation naming February 2024 as Black History Month in the city of Waynesboro. Mr. Short.
My pleasure. I'm pleased to read this proclamation. Whereas Dr. Carter Gudwin-Woodson, distinguished African-American author, editor, scholar, and historian, who is known as the father of black history, founded the Association for the Study of African-American Life and History in September 1915, and launched Negro History Month in 1926. And whereas since 1976, every American president has proclaimed February as Black History Month. And whereas the theme of this year's celebration is African-Americans and the arts established by the Association for the Study of African-American Life and History. And whereas this year's theme explores the fields of visual and performing arts, literature, fashion, folklore, language, film, music, architecture, culinary, and other forms of cultural expression the African-American influence has in America and around the world. Therefore, be it resolved, the mayor of Waynesboro, Virginia, on behalf of the city of council, takes great pleasure in recognizing February 2024 as Black History Month, and urges all citizens to join in celebrating the accomplishments of African-Americans during Black History Month, and encourages the people of Waynesboro to recognize the many talents, achievements, and contributions that African-Americans make to their communities. And be it further resolved that the clerk of the council transmit a copy of this proclamation to the curator of the African-American History Museum, Waynesboro, Virginia, for appropriate distribution.
Yes.
And witness hereof, and I have hereunto set my hand and cause the seal of the city of Waynesboro to be affixed on this 22nd day of January 2024. Mayor Lana Williams.
Thank you so much, Mr. Short. And I don't believe there's anyone here to receive that tonight, so we will forward that on to Ms. Randolph. So item seven is to receive an update from Leslie Tate, our director of community development, and consider providing guidance on the comprehensive plan update and CDVG entitlement programs. Mr. Hamp?
Sure, thank you, Mrs. Mayor. As you indicated, I've asked Leslie to prepare some information about those two significant projects that the planning division of the community development department will be leading in the coming months. The first being a review of the city's comprehensive plan, which, believe it or not, is due for an update under the guidance provided by the state of Virginia. Leslie will outline a possible path forward. And as we've contemplated this and had conversation informally with council, a couple of topics that we want to emphasize and seek guidance on are to what extent public engagement will be involved and whether this exercise will involve a full review and rewrite, so to speak, of the entire document. I'm sure Leslie will address those items, and again, if council is able this evening to provide feedback, we'd be happy to receive it. If you need some time to reflect on the presentation and have thoughts later, you can certainly provide that feedback through email. Secondly, Leslie will also update the council on the status of the entitlement program. We've had, through the years, been prompted and had questions about the entitlement program versus block grant program, and we've been challenged to identify a good time, the right time to have a conversation and reflection on the options, benefits, and drawbacks or negative aspects of either choice. So Leslie's going to also provide some information about that. She's going to update you as well about where we are with our current plan in the entitlement program. Either or both of these topics might make good, might be appropriate for the agenda for the retreat, depending on how the spirit moves you. So with that, Leslie.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of city council. As Mr. Hamp said, I'm going to be presenting tonight and giving an update on the community development department and related to some upcoming mid- and long-range planning exercises that we have. So first, we'll start with the comprehensive plan, and you could, I could go on and on about what a comprehensive plan is, but I'll try and keep that portion brief. Your comprehensive plan is a locality's long-range planning document, so a 10- to 20-year timeframe, and it covers various topics related to the built environment, the natural environment, and long-term vision and goals for the community. Comprehensive plans are data-driven, they inform land use decisions, they speak to your capital improvement projects, they identify locations for existing and future public facilities and infrastructure, and they're the result of robust public engagement and input. The comprehensive plan, it contains a general overview of current community conditions, and then through a series of chapters, it establishes the goals, objectives, and strategies for future land use patterns, environmental protection, transportation improvements, and community economic and social development. The comprehensive plan is also a statement of citizen expectations for the kind of community that they wish to live in. It serves as the basis for new initiatives and guides the planning commission and council through our development review processes. The plan details the means by which the public sector intends to influence and complement private sector development, and in this way, private ventures can be pursued that best leverage public investment and satisfy community objectives and vision. So the city last completed its comprehensive plan update with a kind of a full rewrite of the majority of the plan in 2018. So hopefully, that brief description demonstrates a comprehensive plan is very important to a locality and requires periodic updates. So at the very basic level, the Virginia State Code requires that the plan be reviewed at least every five years, once every five years, to determine if an update is needed. And so that section of code says that the plan is to be reviewed at least once every five years by the local planning commission to determine whether it is advisable to amend the plan. I point out that it's not a requirement to do an update, but it is a requirement to do a review. So that's kind of the legal reason, but more importantly, from a practical perspective, a plan review and update gives a locality the opportunity to assess what has changed in the five years or potentially more since the last comprehensive plan or certain elements of that plan were adopted and updated. So some of the questions are, what does the preceding five years of data say about growth patterns and population, new residential and commercial development, demographics, et cetera, several other data sets? It's important to review the plan to see what objectives and projects have been completed, so which ones can we check off the list that have been done, which ones are still in progress, and what's needed to kind of get them across the finish line. It also helps the community and elected officials speak to new priorities or changing priorities since the previous plan was adopted. And lastly, an important component of a review and update is that engages the community in kind of continued conversations throughout a plan's 10- to 20-year timeframe. So rather than adopting a plan and kind of having it sit without that public interaction for 10- to 20 years, the review and update gives that ability for continued citizen input throughout the plan's life. So again, not a stagnant document, but something that can change and be amended. And so as I previously stated, while a review is required by state code, there really isn't much prescriptive detail that the code includes about what that review has to look like or what any subsequent update looks like. So staff has tried to outline some potential update alternatives for your consideration. But first, I did want to clarify a couple things about comprehensive planning that sometimes gets lost, especially when you're talking about a comp plan update. So comprehensive plans are often buildable over time. The plan components and chapters often get updated at different times, and then are kind of rolled into an overall suite of planning documents. So for example, as I said, the latest city of Waynesboro comprehensive plan was adopted in 2018, but since then, we have also completed a Port Republic Road neighborhood plan. And as a component of that also, prior to 2018, the future land use map and the land use guide wasn't updated with the 2018 rewrite. So that is a 2008 document that reviews the future land uses and the associated types, specific types of development you would envision in each of those future land uses. Then we also have a series of downtown design guidelines that were created and adopted in 2011, and there's also a bicycle plan, which was kind of seen as a sub-element of the transportation chapter, which was adopted in 2012. So kind of all of these different components or chapters kind of make up the overall document, the overall planning document. So I just wanted to keep that in mind, because as we talk about a rewrite and kind of focusing on specific areas to update, I think it's helpful to kind of envision how the plan builds on each other, and sometimes isn't just one document, but could be a range of different chapters and different elements. So some possible alternatives that we could think about as we talk about updating the plan. So the first is kind of the bare minimum in terms of the state code requires that we review the plan. So staff would take elements or sections of the plan to the planning commission, either at regular meetings or through some kind of special work session. We would review the plan with the planning commission, kind of detailing some of the data, the objectives, the projects, again, what's been completed, what remains, and essentially kind of gauge interest. And so say the planning commission looked at the 2018 plan and determined that the goals and the objectives and the policies are really, they think, still in line with what the community would say today, and so at that point, they've met their review and are essentially saying, we don't think it requires any kind of update at this time. I will point out that if that was to happen, and there was a review and no update was recommended, that doesn't mean you have to wait another five years to update your comprehensive plan. You always have the ability to do that at any time, but you would have satisfied those requirements through state code. So that's kind of the bare minimum option that could be pursued after the planning commission were to evaluate it. The second would be that staff, we could kind of do an overall rewrite, kind of start from scratch, essentially put out an RFP or utilize an on-call consultant to do a full rewrite. So it would involve likely a stakeholder committee, extensive public outreach, a significant data update and capture, and then kind of really overhauling or refocusing on the visioning and goal-setting exercises that become such a major component of a comprehensive plan. And then a third option or alternative that staff has thought about, and kind of goes back to my comments about how the plan is kind of a suite of documents and really not just one kind of isolated document, but that they should all kind of definitely be singing the same tune, is that the update could focus on the 2008 future land use map, which was not updated with the 2018 comprehensive plan, and a bike and pedestrian map. Again, the bike plan essentially is a 2012 plan, and so these two elements could really help bring portions of the 2018 plan that weren't updated back to this touch point with public engagement and notification. And so again, that would include significant citizen engagement and input around those specific topics. Your future land use map, which would kind of come with a land use guide, and then also the bike and pedestrian plan, which would come with recommendations for different projects to fill in any gaps that were identified with the plan, and then some cost estimating to get a feel for what those projects might cost as we pursue grant funding through a lot of VDOT programs mostly. And then I wanted to point out at the bottom that no matter what alternative, whether it's one of these three or another one that council suggests, no matter what kind of update occurs, that we are completing or the region is completing the housing study, and we just recently identified some of that data. And so once that is complete, that would serve as a significant update also, because I would envision us taking the data that is Waynesboro-specific and having kind of an element or a housing chapter to our existing 2018 plan that would cover Waynesboro data and then also some policies that are Waynesboro-specific that come out of the recommendations from that. So I wanted to point out that that would also be an update component that we would see in the coming months. And then, not to get into a lot of detail with this, but so this is the future land use map that's from 2008, and so it has all different colors that represent different land uses that you would envision, and that's, you know, when we're evaluating land use applications, we're looking to see how someone's rezoning or someone's conditional use permit matches with this plan, and so it also identifies areas for mixed use, you know, mixed use area A, B, C, D, and that comes with an associated text that describes those areas. It shows proposed greenway alignments, it shows proposed future road connections, it shows future park and other kind of public facilities, existing schools. So you can see, it really is an important document and has not been kind of revisited in that way since 2008. And so that is one area that staff thinks that we should focus some attention with our review and our update. And then just things to keep in mind as we talk about planning and when we do planning processes. So we have, since 2023, since last year, we have four new planning commissioners, including your council representative, Mr. Lee. Obviously, 2024 is an election year for the city. I also wanted to note that the comprehensive plan update takes significant time to accomplish. So typically, you're looking at anywhere from eight months, if you were kind of doing a more scaled-back version, to 18 months if you were kind of doing a full rewrite. I also wanted to point out that the Stanton Augusta Waynesboro Metropolitan Planning Organization, which is kind of the transportation regional planning body, they're preparing to embark on their 2025 long-range transportation plan update. And then, as I've already mentioned, the housing study is set to be complete in June of 2024. So I just said those are things to keep in mind, because I don't think they necessarily maybe lean to any one or other alternative, but wanted to point those out as you also kind of think through what's next and what's coming up. So as Mr. Hamp mentioned, some next steps, staff is looking for guidance on what kind of alternative or scope and scale of update council would like to pursue. So at the upcoming council retreat, staff would be happy to kind of present a report card or essentially benchmark assessment of our existing 2018 plan and kind of tick through those different priority projects. Some of you are more aware than others about the plan and the history of the plan and all the projects that the plan entails, so I think it would be a helpful exercise to kind of go through what has been accomplished and finalized, what is in process, and then what, you know, hasn't been started, and then that might also help to inform what kind of update you envision. And then I just wanted to end with some of staff's perspectives about alternative three that focuses on the future land use map and kind of a targeted bike pedestrian plan, and then also significant housing updates with the housing study, that although that might seem like a scaled-back update to the comprehensive plan, and it's not kind of a full-blown rewrite, that, you know, when you're touching the land use map and housing and transportation-related components, you really are kind of putting an update on a lot of segments of the existing plan. So it would still be a very significant update and review, and would also have robust public outreach and engagement to cover those topics. So that's all I have related to the comprehensive plan and the review and the requirements, and then some possible alternatives, and I'd be happy to answer any questions or any feedback that you have tonight, and also happy to revisit it at the retreat to kind of talk through what we've achieved with our existing plan to kind of further guide your decision-making.
Any questions, comments?
This one that I would just offer to consider is somewhere between 2012 and 2016, there was a state code provision that requires that when you're considering land use changes that would influence and inform your zoning guidance that accompany a transportation review. So I imagine that's just another work effort that wasn't mentioned. I don't think a bike and ped one would exclusively satisfy that requirement. And then the other thing that I would, you know, observe as you did with, but to build on it, is, you know, with three council seats up in the end of the year, I'd also reflect on the fact that we've got, you know, 60% of council currently didn't participate in the last comprehensive plan update. And so I would just, you know, my 30-second sales pitch on taking a holistic approach at it is because I think it really does provide an opportunity for elected leaders to put their fingerprints on the path and direction of the community for not just, you know, five, 10, 15 years, but really helps inform them. And, you know, I was privileged to have the opportunity to participate when I got on council with Bruce and my colleagues, and I thought it was a really useful and energetic and informed approach. Thing that I would just offer to my colleagues in public before we get to the retreat, you're all going to hear the sales pitch again in the retreat, but would be that the sheer number of people who participated in our community on this, you know? So you think about all the, you know, shaking hands and knocking on doors that you do during a campaign, and we're talking almost 400 people participated in this comprehensive plan process. So from round tables, we had, you know, kitchen table top conversations and public meetings and surveys and yada, yada, yada. And it's really, it's really cool, because, you know, the folks that talk to me may not be the same folks to talk to Lana, or talk to Kenny, or to Jim, or to Bruce. And so I found it informative for my service and continue to find it valuable to my service in having, providing an appreciation of the different perspectives and values and priorities amongst our citizenry that you wouldn't otherwise get if you do one of these sort of conversations in isolation. So that would be my, probably more than 30 seconds, but sales pitch.
So for me, I agree with Terry. I'm a strong supporter of community involvement, so I would want to see where the community was involved in creating a plan.
You made me think of another 30 seconds, so I'll get that. I would just add that not only do I think doing a top-to-bottom, for the most part, a full-on take on the comprehensive plan adds value, not that, you know, just doing a housing or a land use and a transportation chapter wouldn't add value, but, you know, show of hands of how many folks have recognized in your service how connected everything is. And I think it's really important that our citizens understand how connected everything is from choices of affordable housing to, you know, what we can, how we can support our first responders, to our school division, to mental health and, you know, social services. I mean, everything is so connected, and I think our overall community And I think our, our overall community benefits from having that conversation. I think the conference plan is a great way to, to sort of elicit that, so.
Thank you. Anybody else? No? Something else?
All right, yeah, move into the next thing. Okay, so the next update I have this evening is related to the City of Waynesboro's Community Development Block Grant Entitlement Program. So I'm, as I'm sure you're all aware, but I'm going to briefly go over just some of the, the primary goals of the program. So the entitlement grant provides annual grants on a formula basis, and each annual grant is designated into specific projects during our annual action plan planning process each year. The entitlement program's goal is to develop viable communities by providing decent housing and a suitable living environment and expanding economic opportunities and principally for low and moderate income persons. The goals of that program are accomplished through three national objectives. So first is to benefit low and moderate income persons, and that's determined by HUD as 80% of the median family income, and that's adjusted for a number of individuals in the household. So those numbers are set by, by HUD and by the federal government. Second is that it, the program aids in the prevention and elimination of slums and blight. This requires a certification or a designation that at least 25% of buildings in a given area are deteriorated or deteriorating or where there are high vacancy and turnover rates. And then third, typically, the national objective is met through some kind of particular urgency in that you can think of disaster relief when you think of that. But typically, in the past, our projects have just kind of been focused on various improvements that benefit low to moderate income persons, either on an area like census tract level basis or on an individual person basis, as, you know, an example would be some kind of home rehab for a specific individual. So this map shows the census tracts that are qualifying for community development block grant funds, again, on that area basis. That doesn't mean a person living outside of this area couldn't qualify for certain programs on the individual basis, but this area, or this map shows the area basis. So just kind of process-wise, because the years kind of run together when we're thinking about it. So we typically receive notice of our allocation amount in February or March, but even before then, now, we're starting to plan for, for knowing that amount and the public outreach and engagement that's required for us to adopt that plan by July to have it submitted to HUD in time. So we typically find out our amount in February or March, and we're required to hold public outreach and engagement to come up with our annual action plan projects that'll be listed in that fiscal year and then adopt that plan by early July so that we can submit it to HUD for review and be ready for an October program year start. But an additional requirement of the program separate from the yearly annual action plan is that a locality must adopt a five-year consolidated plan that identifies goals of the grant program for a five-year timeframe. And really, that should be done after you engage service provider stakeholders and your citizens. So as I mentioned, each year's annual action plan should be identifying projects that meet the goals of your five-year consolidated plan. So you can think of your five-year consolidated plan as more of a mid, kind of mid-range planning effort, and then your annual action plan each year is meeting those mid-range goals. So the last five-year plan was completed for fiscal year 2019 to fiscal year 2023. So we are due for a new consolidated plan to guide the entitlement program. Our current plan that has expired or is expiring, the priority goals within that existing plan are neighborhood revitalization, noting that that is to create suitable living environments. The second is affordable housing development, providing decent affordable housing. And the third priority goal from that plan is business district revitalization by creating economic opportunities. So staff is going to be working with our consultant as we engage service provider stakeholders in the February-March timeframe. And then also outreach and engagement to the community in the March and April timeframe. The data collection will be ongoing, and that will help us to identify, you know, really, the five-year plan is saying what type of entitlement program is the City of Waynesboro going to operate for the next five years. And this consolidated plan will guide the projects that are approved in each annual action plan. So every annual action plan year, we'd be looking at requests or project ideas and kind of matching them up against the consolidated plan goals to see, okay, what, what needs to be our priority to meet these five-year planning goals. So we'll be engaging the community and preparing both a five-year consolidated plan and our fiscal year 2024 annual action plan. So they'll run together from now until July. Fortunately, the City of Stanton is also due for their five-year consolidated planning process, and they utilize the same consultant that we do for the Community Development Block Grant Entitlement Services. And so we have had kind of an initial meeting with city staff and our shared consultant to discuss, you know, ways that we could potentially see regional efficiencies, especially as we engage the service providers, because service providers in our area that provide services for low to moderate income persons, while some may be more locality specific, they're very regional in nature. So having to engage a group for, for one person's planning effort and kind of ask those very same questions to that same group. So we're hoping to maybe utilize some kind of shared outreach as far as the stakeholders, service providers are concerned. So that's mainly just an update of the planning process that we would be kicking off our consolidated plan, you know, kind of earlier and then coming along right behind that would be the annual action plan for the 2024 year. But as Mr. Hamp mentioned in the past, we have had the question raised regarding kind of the entitlement program versus the competitive grant program and kind of in this yearly cycle that we get in where, you know, the funds are available, the planning engagement and reporting requirements. We haven't really had the time to kind of turn and focus on the competitive program and, and what that may look like. But I did try to, and did reach out to the Department of Housing and Community Development for a little bit of input that they might provide on maybe some pros and cons to either program to kind of help inform decisions as we move forward. So I'll kind of run through this, and this is information that came back from the Department of Housing and Community Development, which operates the competitive program. So with the entitlement program, you know, we automatically receive a certain allocation of funds each year. It's not an amount that we determine, it's an amount that HUD determines, but we get it every year. It comes on a consistent basis, and it keeps staff kind of moving in this secular planning process and identification of projects. Obviously, with the non-entitlement program, and so it's an either/or, you can either be in the entitlement, you can't be in both. So you would have to say, we're, we're no longer going to be an entitlement community, and we're going to go after the competitive grants. And so again, it's a competitive process. You put forth an application, they have buckets of funding that are set aside for planning grants to kind of plan a proposed project. And then likely, if you got a planning grant and worked through the full kind of planning process, then you could go back and apply for the actual construction grant or development grant for whatever project was identified in the plan. So the DHCD also mentioned that there's likely greater flexibility in the entitlement program. You know, it is constrained certainly by federal regulations and guidelines, but you have a little bit more flexibility to kind of add on to maybe existing projects that are within your budget, and you just need a little bit more to push through, or things that might kind of fall by the wayside when you're doing your budget. And this would be extra grant funds that would help for various projects. The competitive grants are a little bit more limited in what the state allows. So they have various buckets of programs, like a water and sewer fund or streetscape funding or downtown revitalization funding. So you just kind of have to make sure your project fits into one of those buckets. And then also with the entitlement program, I will point out that, so the locality, we're responsible for all the reporting that we have to do to HUD. And then the administrative costs are limited to about $35,000 of our roughly $180,000 grant that we can utilize for administrative costs. DHCD did mention that if you did the non-entitlement program, that they handle all the HUD reporting and that they can reimburse localities for citizen engagement. And then there's an added administrative allowance of up to 10% of the grant award for them to administer. So while it says that DHCD handles all the HUD reporting, the locality would still obviously be responsible for all the reporting that's needed to go to DHCD. So, you know, I just point that out. And then as far as money is concerned, so with the entitlement program, every year we're getting roughly $180,000, and it fluctuates a little bit, 187, I think, was this previous program year, but that's an approximate of what we receive. And then with the competitive grants, as has been mentioned, you know, you have access to more funding. So $1.5 million is the maximum in most award categories. And so then I'll point out that if you're just kind of, just doing just a raw math exercise, over five years, we get roughly $900,000 in entitlement funding. And they do have a $3 million cap on the competitive funding. So the representative that I spoke with did say that over that five years, say you applied for two to three projects. So say you applied for two projects at $1.5 million each, and you, you know, were very successful in the competitive grant process, you know, that you could potentially get $3 million over that five-year timeframe. Again, that's just a raw math exercise. It's not speaking to how maybe competitive the projects would be or really staff's capacity to, you know, manage to $1.5 million projects. But it is just kind of to note what maybe those variations in funding could look like over a five-year timeframe. So that's kind of, you know, I've, I've reached out to several people in various capacities with HUD and with DHCD to get some information, and, you know, no one's been like, it's a clear answer either way, but I thought this was helpful, the information he provided that kind of ran through some pros and cons of each option and, and wanted to share those all with you. And I'd be happy to, to answer any questions you have about the consolidated planning process we're going to be going through with for entitlement and the upcoming annual action plan, or any additional questions you have related or input to entitlement versus non-entitlement. And if I don't have the answers, I'll try and get them for you.
Any questions?
The criteria for, no, I asked you a lot of questions on the entitlement, so I kind of understand that a little bit. Some of my ideas were dead on arrival, and others, I know there was not enough time because there was different processes that you have to go through for those entitlements. My first question is, as far as the, you, you mentioned in the, the comprehensive plan that you're going to kind of give us an idea of boxes checked. Would that apply to, to this program as well? So when we talk about neighborhood revitalization, affordable housing, business district revitalization, how do we do over that five years? Are we going to be privy to that?
Yeah, so I, I mean, certainly we have the information of kind of all the past projects that have been assigned entitlement funds and kind of where we're at through that. So if that's something like kind of a refresh or presentation everyone would like to have as part of the retreat, we definitely have that information to kind of talk through. Here, all our, you know, we could focus it to the last five years. Here are the projects that have been identified and what's been completed and what is yet to be completed.
So, yeah, and, and, and I, and you showed me that. I, I guess I'm, I'm more concerned with, did we meet the mark? Did we, did we hit the mark? Did we, you know, the ones that would have, were approved and, and funds were allocated, did, did we hit that mark that we were aiming for? Or if we didn't hit that mark, should we start to consider the non-entitlement, which is the bigger pot of money and, and to do better, I guess, if that makes sense?
Which direction would maximize?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. If we're not hitting the mark, I understand that, you know, we, we're getting that 180, and, and, and I'm hopeful that if we were to continue that, that, you know, Mr. Hamp would find it in his means to, to pay that administrative fee so we get that, that whole, whole 180 or 185, whatever that, that number is. And we would use it effectively, but if it's not, if we're not hitting the mark, then maybe we need to have that conversation, to Terry's point, on the non-entitlement and, and, and what we could achieve with that. But understanding that, you know, we have to compete.
Yeah, and I think, I also think that with the consolidated plan process, this five-year plan that we're getting ready to embark on, it is very much, you know, we've had a lot of turnover in the CDBG entitlement program, like who's managed, who's managed it, it's kind of changed throughout, and there's been significant staff turnover, both in who manages it and, you know, within the city. So I think getting to embark on a new five-year consolidated plan is also a really great place to be because we're essentially saying, for the next five years, what type of entitlement community do we want to be? What types of programs are going to be our priority? And so we're going to get that from hopefully citizen engagement and also from talking to service providers in our area that work with low to moderate income persons to identify, here are the real needs that people have, and here are the priority goals. And then with every future annual action plan that we bring to you, we would be saying, this project, this project is being brought to you because it meets, you know, whatever goal of your consolidated plan. So not that we can't look back at the past one and also see, you know, where we're at and did we meet the mark, but going through this new five-year consolidated plan, you all would have the ability to, you know, really affect and make decisions on what kind of entitlement program do we want to run for the next five years potentially.
Okay. Anybody else?
Yeah, just a couple of observations. Well, one, thank you for the table.
Sure.
That's awesome.
Yeah.
And, you know, I don't think I've gone to a casino in probably 20 years, and when I did, I brought 40 bucks. So I am not, Terry Short is not a gambling man. But for me, I think there is a compelling case to really and thoroughly examine whether or not the, being in an entitlement community makes sense. Given over a decade, I popped in the Consumer Price Index over the last decade, the value of that $180,000 after admin fees is under $100,000. So the buying power of that is now under $100,000. And we've done some, staff has done some exceptionally cool projects that I think are important and are helpful and beneficial to the community, but it, we cannot keep pace with the need relative to the amount of funding that's available. And so I, I would, I would advocate that, that's, that's one. The, the five-year consolidated plan, I've got a question about that, but as I, as I recall, I've, you know, I've attended a few, a DHCD webinars and in-person stuff about all the different programs. And I can think of at least maybe three different programs where they offer outside of CDBG some, some planning grants for communities that could assist. And you know what I was saying the other day about our housing, about if we're going to make any sort of, start moving the needle, let's just start small, like pick a neighborhood or two, or, you know, and develop a game plan that's in the LMI area, develop a targeted game plan for it through, you know, a DHCD grant, and then move towards going to the competitive pool. Because I think you could make a substantial, you know, impact into a part of our community that would be noticeable and appreciable and actually build enthusiasm and confidence, I think, in, in the community. But to the, to the thought about the five-year consolidated plan, if council decided to stick with the entitlement route, I would be curious of if there's a, is there a federal requirement that we cannot use the five-year consolidated plan to satisfy all of the public engagement process over the next five years? Because, well, I, you know, I don't enjoy or not enjoy having the conversation every year. I think we go through a lot of debate and a lot of conversations, lots of meetings, lots of your time, lots of our community's time to go through this sausage-making of talking about $100,000 that we're going to spend. And so if we can get the five-year consolidated plan to see if the feds will accept that as serving as, we're going to tell you what we're going to do for the next five years, and I won't see you next year. You know, we're going, this is what we're going to do for five years and, and then come back at it again. Because I just feel like it's, it's a little disingenuous, you know, for, because I think we kind of go out there and, you know, community meetings that I've been a part of, and I certainly appreciate all of your meetings that you held last year. But I think people build a false expectation and of, or belief in what can get accomplished for less than $100,000. So I think if we can knock it out of the park with this five, and again, if council decides that they want to go- decides that they want to go with the entitlement route, then that'd be one option. Maybe that's what we do for the first year, but while we explore these DHCD. And then my last point would be that if we really want to tackle that, and maybe this could be a topic or conversation, maybe I'll remember to talk about it, maybe I won't, at the work, at the retreat, is we have to invest in our community development department resources. If we want to have transformative change in neighborhoods, we can't rely on just two staff members. I mean, we're going to have to have, I think, another conversation, certainly with Mr. Hamp or his guidance, on what the capacity. But if we're going to lean in on this grant there, that grant there, this grant over here, then we, there's only so much bandwidth between that and all the development reviews and site plan reviews that, and comp plan updates and CDBG stuff that's going on with staff.
So that means that if we went with non-entitlement, then we would need maybe a grant writer?
Well, I mean, I think there's a, I think there's a benefit to a multi-disciplined individual that is either part-time or full-time that is shared maybe between, I've pitched this to Mike before, about doing a shared staff person with our school division that specializes in grant writing or otherwise, that could benefit both organizations. But, yeah, I don't have any answers to it, but.
If I might offer an observation, I think in preparing for this presentation, Leslie and I talked about, I think our organization has demonstrated some consistent success about getting grants and accessing funds. I think where our concern is, is the capacity to run projects. So if the council wants to offer some, a resource, we would probably gravitate toward either another planner, somebody who could oversee a project, kind of a multi, somebody who could pursue funds, see a project, also handle the day-to-day service obligations in community development. But getting the money doesn't seem to be our concern or anxiety at this point. It's like delivering a project once we get it is, we're kind of pressed to do that.
That's helpful, thank you.
Thank you so much. Anybody else? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Leslie. Okay. Item made is to receive an update from Jenny Newman. She's our Director of the Central Shenandoah Office on Youth. Mr. Hamp?
Yes, ma'am. Ms. Newman is here this evening at my invitation. It occurred to me as we were preparing for the previous meeting, I was having a conversation with a council member specifically about truancy and truancy programming, and I realized that we had not heard from Jenny in some time. And really, Ms. Newman, as the Director of the Office on Youth, which I would remind you is a regional organization, is at the center of programming and needs identification for children and family in all three communities. And I would regard her as, through her experience and knowledge and her commitment to evidence-based programming as an expert or an authority about the health of children and family in Waynesboro. And I would say, as good as our programming is, there's, I can't overemphasize the value of the partnerships and relationships that are built through the Office on Youth and Jenny as facilitators and conveners of resources. And really, they're the ultimate good sports because if there's a need and a program and partners can't seem to find a way, can't seem to find staff, Jenny and her staff are often the ones who say, we can help with that and they'll take a program and run with it. So I'm glad that she's here and I'm remiss in not getting Jenny in front of you sooner and she's going to talk about what they've done in the past year and give you a glimpse at what's on the horizon for the coming year.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor and council members. Often when I'm out in the community, I hear people who say, who is the Office on Youth? And aren't you a nonprofit? And the answer is no. We are local government. We've been part of Waynesboro City since 1978. We are in the code of Virginia and we are one of five offices left in the state from the original 1970s moving forward. So what are we tasked to do? We're tasked to assess the needs of juveniles and family members and we're here to be a bridge between local government and other youth-serving agencies. In 2000, we merged with the Stanton office and Augusta County. And currently, we have eight full-time staff, three regular part-time, we have some outreach workers and contracted facilitators. 73% of our funding is from the three localities, 25% from grants and 2% comes from fees and donations. So our vision is a community where all youth will reach their highest potential. We have a strategic plan, 2020 to 2024. So this year, our youth commission and our staff will be looking to update all of the goals in that plan. We are, as I said, continuously assessing community needs and responding to those needs with new services. These services, as Mr. Hamp said, often end up falling on our plate and we take them on and run with them, but we also look to all of those other agencies as to who can partner with us, who can work with us and who can help us establish the goals in the area. So some of our current collaborations, obviously Waynesboro Stanton and Augusta County schools, we are in and out of the schools every single day with multiple staff. We work with the Children's Services Act, Community Policy Management Team, the Family Assessment Planning Team. That group actually came out of the original offices on youth, so we have a seat on those boards. We collaborate with Prevention Unit, the Community Services Board, the Department of Health, your police, your sheriff's departments, the libraries, Department of Social Services, we're very active with them, the United Way Civics Groups, Boys and Girls Club, Project Grows, the YMCA's, and we also are in and out of the Middle River Regional Jail at this time. Our goal is to bring resources directly into the community through these collaborations. So we work as youth advocates on these local boards and committees. And again, we're asked and tasked to develop services based on the needs that are presented. So sometimes those needs come from other assessments. Sometimes those needs, we used to be able to get into the schools and do a youth risk behavior survey that is not being done at this time, but the Department of Health does something similar. So to get directly to what the youth needs are, we use that at this time. So what are some of our divisions? How do we tackle these needs of families? So our Family Services Division is evidence-based programs. We have six different parent support programs for parents, guardians and grandparents. These individuals come from a variety of circumstances, all with the goal to reduce challenging and defiant behaviors in their children. Through the programs, we help to support and strengthen parents' abilities to be active and engaged in the lives of their children, and this also reduces family stress. So these prevention programs will then hopefully keep the families from being involved with social services and/or the courts, is one of the goals, and thereby having children more engaged with school and their community. The Safe Routes to School program, this is very specific to Waynesboro City. We have started to expand this a little bit into Stanton City, but this is a bicycle and pedestrian safety program. Currently, we're supported through the Virginia Foundation for Healthy Youth with a Healthy Community Action Team. This is our first year with this grant. And we're, our goal is to get kids and families moving, reduce obesity in our area. But that program, we do Walk to School Week, you all hear about that, in October. Waynesboro has been doing Walk to School Week for 15 or more years. Our office is directly involved with that and helps to sponsor that program. But we're also in the elementary schools. We have 50 or more bikes that we received under a grant through Virginia Department of Transportation. The Safe Routes program, it's a non-infrastructure grant. We bring an entire program into the elementary schools for bicycle safety and teach children how to ride. It's a lot of fun, pretty amazing. We enjoy it. I don't ride personally, but a lot of my staff does. The other piece that we do is we work with Public Works and the Planning Department on infrastructure issues that need to be addressed, especially around the schools. Another piece to the Safe Routes to School program are the street murals that have been put up throughout the city. So we're looking to do more of those as well and those involve the students usually in the art classes. And then personal responsibility education programs. This is a new title for what used to be teen pregnancy prevention because teen pregnancy prevention is, the programs that we did under that just encompass so many more things. We teach family life education in the schools. We talk about healthy relationships. We provide educational programs for parents and caregivers as well as other professionals. So it encompasses just all the things up there. It encompasses so many things. Screenagers is a new project that is going to be social media and internet safety. We work with human trafficking and some organizations in the area on human trafficking. So either we're teaching in the schools, fourth through 10th grade, we're teaching in the community, we're teaching parents, or we're training other professionals. So my staff, again, looking at that evidence-based, we spend a lot of time getting them trained to be able to be a train the trainer and be able to go out into the community to talk as experts in these areas. The Virginia Juvenile Community Crime Control Act, this program has actually been around since 1995. We've been a recipient of the grant since 1996. We work closely with the 25th District Court Service Unit. Basically, the program allows judges to have additional alternative sentencing options. So communities receive these additional funds. We design programs to meet the need of the community. There is a group that gets together with the judges and the court service unit to identify what those needs may be and how the money should be spent every two years. And this way, we can ultimately serve more youth directly in the community. So we have detention alternative programs to keep youth out of the detention center and at home with their family and caregivers. We also offer diversionary programs and services as they're ordered through the 25th District Courts. And one of the programs that is now partially funded through VJCAA is the Truancy Prevention and Intervention Program. This is a fairly new program. We started it in 2019. Truancy was looked at differently by the schools through COVID because of the nature of school being virtual. And then as school went back into session, it was kind of a hybrid situation. We maintained the program. Check and Connect is an evidence-based program out of University of Minnesota. Basically, it is just what you hear. We check in with the kids and we're making connections with them. So we have mentors that go into the schools. The schools refer students to us that they've identified as having missed three to five days of unexcused absences. That's our ideal target. The Virginia Department of Education defines chronically absent students as those that have missed 10% or more of the school year for any reason, so excused or unexcused. The target rate should be no more than 15% of those students. And research tells us that students that are not in school, it takes a toll on their grades, performance on standardized tests, irregular attendance can be a predictor of high school dropout, which then leads to your labor market prospects, diminished health, increased involvement in the criminal justice system. So chronically absent students are at risk for many more adverse outcomes. So just a statistic there, last school year, 3,004 students were chronically absent across Stanton, Waynesboro and Augusta County. So as we receive these, our mentors go out, again, we match with them, we check on their grades, we talk to them about their goals, we do assessments with them, we really do some solid planning on how to get them back into school, how can they improve their grades? So we're addressing everything from maybe an issue at home to a teacher to a bullying situation. So the mentors are there for the students, meeting with them at least once a week. They can also meet with them in the community. They don't have to meet with them just at school. The grant that helped us expand this program was through a juvenile justice grant. It was an 18-month grant. We did get an extension for another year on that grant. And one of the goals that we had was to reduce the number of status offenders for truancy. So we wanted to reduce the number of cases that were going before the judge and going before the family assessment planning teams. According to the Department of Education, the total number of filings in '22 and '23 school year had been cut in half compared to 2019 and 2020, which was kind of the last year going into, obviously, the pandemic. So you can see, there is a big dive there. That was the pandemic, when truancy was being looked at in a different light. As students came back into school, the Check and Connect program was already in there. We had that expansion going on. We added a second mentor. We became involved with all the schools and these youth. The caseload started to drop, not directly because of us. I can't make that correlation, but I'd like to. So we're assisting. We're assisting the schools and what we found based on this is that the number of students that went before the judges came down drastically. So we are now under the state average, which is, it's absolutely fantastic because it frees up time, again, for the judges as well. They're not seeing as many of these cases. The family assessment planning team is also not seeing as many of these cases. So again, this is funded in part through the Virginia Juvenile Crime Control Act as well as the grant that we had. The schools saw such a plus for this program that through some additional funding and grants that they had, they asked us to hire a third person. So we have just employed a third person directly with funds coming from the schools. To give you an idea of some of our success, more than 60% of the youth have improved their attendance and grades coming out of the pandemic. We've had four early graduations, two students complete their GED, four juniors just passed their classes, so they are now eligible for early graduation. We've had multiple students get perfect attendance and make AB honor roll. We now have students that have passed driver's ed and behind the wheel. We were able to get one student a bike for their job. We've had multiple students that we've placed on jobs and we've had students who've joined basketball teams, wrestling team and soccer just in the past year. So that is one of our newest and growing programs. There is additional needs there, which we're working, again, directly with the schools on how we can address those needs. The schools, we're in the middle schools and the high schools and we served over 100 students last year for that, for the last school year. Community in Motion, this is another fairly new program. This program began through meetings that the YMCA, Waynesboro YMCA and Augusta Health had set up during COVID. And we were, a lot of community members, 10 to 20 at every meeting, trying to find out what the needs were in our community, how can we address them? So a lot happened during COVID. Coming out of COVID, we were also looking at what are the new needs now as the students return to school. One thing that we all found was people aren't seeking us out for services. So what do we do? We need to provide the services to the communities themselves. So the schools were involved in these discussions. They had a parent resource van that they said they would love to donate. So the Office on Youth stepped up. I combined two positions, thankfully, to the city, two part-time positions to a full-time position. We took on that truck and Community in Motion launched in the spring of 2022. We did it all in about six months and that summer, there were four city departments We did it all in about six months, and that summer, there were four city departments, the Waynesboro Schools, and six other community agencies that rotated throughout eight communities in Waynesboro, bringing services directly to, to the housing, to apartment complexes. Sometimes it was just a block, an area that had been defined as a need. Our goal is to connect individuals and families to the essential resources such as healthcare, education, library services, recreation, and provide information about local opportunities. Preschool and school registration occurred. The Waynesboro Library has been going out now every other week. You can see the books on the corner there, so we're using it also as a book bus. That program should be expanding to adult books as well as the children's books, so they can actually check these out when we come into the community. My staff that go out into these communities say the greatest thing in the world is right now, when they pull up, they feel like the ice cream truck without the music. Kids come running out, parents come running out to see them, they want to know what we have, what games. The side there, you can see they're drawing on it, that is a chalkboard. So that is something that the kids can do. The fire department has come out with us, Project Grows has come out with us, Augusta Health has come out with us. We're also meeting where they are in their communities. Life Works Project helped distribute over 40 bags of food. The United Way did multiple sign-ups right there on the bus for preschool and for school. So this program is continuing to expand as well. Over the next few years, we hope to strengthen the communities. We're bringing parents out where they may not have met each other. We're bringing youth out, they're reading to each other, they're playing games together. So we're trying to bring those communities together, not only to strengthen them, but for our agencies to be able to go in and show what other resources we can provide. So it's a great way to get those needs, identify needs. As families trust us, they're going to start telling us what they want, what they need in their community, so that we can help address it. This program as well is something that we're hoping to expand, being a regional office, into Stanton and Augusta County. It'll be another year or two, but Augusta County Regional Library is hoping to start with a book bus under Community in Motion, and we will be working with them on that and that expansion. So how can you find us? We are at the Rosenwald Community Center. We also have an office in Stanton City, but our main site is here in Waynesboro. We have a lot of resources in our lobby. We have staff that answer the phone. I pride on my staff that if they don't know the answer, they're going to find the answer by asking somebody else in the office. We get calls from parents all the time. We get calls from other agencies. How can I address this need? Where can I find something for a parent or a youth? How can we get them involved? So a single thought, how can we help make youth succeed? And that's what we do. That is our goal, is to help make youth succeed, and I would love for any of you to come and visit us. We're there Monday through Friday, sometimes Saturday and Sunday, multiple evenings, running parent classes. My staff, the eight staff that we have, are very, very active all the time. Does anybody have any questions?
I have one.
You mentioned a lot of the services that your team addresses for the student, and I've heard that some of the truancy was related to the student having to babysit a sibling because of childcare. How do you address those type of situations?
So in that situation, it's a meeting with the school and the parents, and we start doing some brainstorming. We do run into that. So we have youth who, they miss their bus because they're putting a younger sibling on the bus. In Waynesboro City, most kids can walk to school. So it would be addressing maybe a change in a schedule, it would be getting them a bike. So it depends on the age of the student. Working with a parent on before and after-school childcare, is there another place where we can drop them off? Depending on the community, looking at that Community in Motion, who are your neighbors? Who else can we get? So we really do that family brainstorming at that point and work directly with the school to see what else might be able to be done.
You had mentioned unexcused absences. What, what differentiates between an excused, obviously sickness, but does they have to prove that they were, so they need doctor's excuses if they exceed a certain amount, or?
Yeah, they're supposed to provide a doctor's note, or, you know, parents are supposed to call the schools. So those unexcused absences are when the school contacts the parent, and the parent either does not respond whatsoever, or says, I did not know they were not at school. I dropped them off. I saw them get on the bus, or I saw them take out the door walking. I don't know where they are. And then it develops into multiple things in the Code of Virginia that the schools have to follow, but at that three to five day of unexcused absent mark, they can have a meeting, and they can invite a community member to, invite community members to those meetings. So that's where Check and Connect often is invited to those meetings as well. It's an option for parents. Parents do have to sign on to the program, but once they do, we're, like I said, we're in contact with the student as well as the family. We're in and out of the school. We can see their grades, we can see their attendance, we can see if they missed a class, which class are they missing on an ongoing basis? So the school determines if it's excused or unexcused. We do not.
Me and Mr. Lee met with Dr. Castle and Dr. Barber about a month or so ago, sat down, and one of the things they were talking about was the problem with truancy, and it seems like it is a big issue and a big problem. So thank you for everything you're doing.
Thank you, Jenny. Anyone else? Anybody else? Okay. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Item nine is communication correspondence and calendar and comments from our city manager, Mr. Hamp.
Yes, ma'am, I have a couple of items this evening. First, I wanted to inform the council of several special event applications that involve street closures and the consumption or service of alcohol and public property. Both of these applications are for programs that have been approved in previous years, and both are submitted by the Wayne Theater. First is the Rock the Block Gala, and that event is scheduled for Friday, June 7. This involves the closure of Main Street between Wayne Avenue and Church Street. Set up for the event begins at 1:00 PM in the afternoon. The event itself begins at 6:30 and ends at 10:30, and the street will reopen once those folks have cleaned the street, so that later that evening, Main Street will be reopened. And that's a one-event, one-time thing. The second, though, is a series, and this is Wayne on Main Concert Series, and these are concerts that occur, I think, the Fourth Friday from May, June, July, and August. Street closures begin at 5:00. The event runs from 6:00 until 8:00, and again, once they get cleaned up after event, the Main Street will be open. So the code designates me the authority to approve these closures, but as my habit, especially with, when it involves downtown, is to alert the council that I've received them. I'm going to process them this week. If you have questions or concerns, let me know. But generally, I just like to make the council aware when we're going to have closures and events on Main Street. And I can, if you have questions this evening, I can respond to those. Oh, a reminder that on February 9, we're scheduled for our retreat.
Thank you so much. Any questions for Mr. Hamp?
It'll be at the Bright offices, same location as it was last year.
Perfect, thank you. Okay, item 10 is citizen comment period. Do we have anyone signed up to speak?
No one has signed up to speak.
Okay. Item 11, Mr. Allen, would you like to make a motion to adjourn?
Yes, I'll make the motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Mr. Allen. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, everyone's seconded. I will go with Mr. Wood. I heard him first. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.